Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me in the back?
Yeah.
Thank you all very, very much for being here to this town hall. It's great to see so many people. First, I want to thank the city of Woodland for hosting us tonight in this great venue. Thank you very much. And I'd like to invite Rick Gonzalez up. If you'll come up, Rick. Rick served in Vietnam with the Army, the 135th Military Intelligence. A good friend. If you were so intelligent in '67 when you left, why did I have to go in '68? You don't have to answer. Rick, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd just like to say I've been at GI for so darn long and I've been asked one time to do the Pledge of Allegiance, one time. So I about fell over when they asked me if I would do this. I would be honored, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and thank you for your service. Well, again, thank you all for being here. This is a district work period for Congress. And during these district work periods, I come home and I have town hall meetings throughout my entire district. And this is the second one I've had this week, following a rally that we had on Monday and a Zoom town hall meeting on the Friday of last. I think it's really important to do this. And I've invited two colleagues to join us. Our Majority Leader in the State Assembly, Cecilia Aguilar-Curry. And our Man U N State Senator, Christopher Cabaldin. I think it's important that we're all here. We share offices throughout the district. And it works out really well. If someone walks into my office and they have a legislative issue, a state issue, just walk across the hall. They walk into one of their offices and it's a congressional issue, just walk across the hall. So we have a pretty good partnership going on. And it's working really well with Cecilia, it's worked really well for a while now. And Christopher, I know it'll work really well with you. So thank you, guys, for joining us. Usually, I have these town hall meetings to hear from people, talk about what I'm doing in Congress and different bills that are important to folks. But, you know, it's really taking a different course right now. And I think you know that. As a matter of fact, it's rare. I think the last time we had town hall meetings that were this well-attended is when we were doing the Affordable Care Act in Congress. And so this is a rare time. It's a different time. It's a difficult time. I know a lot of people are worried. A lot of people are mad as hell. And I understand you. I agree. I'm worried and I'm mad as hell. So we have a lot in common. The chaos and divisiveness in Congress, I have never seen it this bad in the entire time I've been there and in the entire time I've been a student of public policy and politics. And it's really serious this time. It affects every one of us right down to the ground. And some of these decisions that are being made or trying to be made really affect us. They affect us all. These cuts, this intrusion by someone who's not elected, an outside billionaire, never been vetted, bringing his people in to go through all of the most private records that we have, our financial records, our healthcare records. It's frightening. And so you're spot-on if you fall into that category. And it's already having an effect. We've already lost money, critical money, in our district to build fire breaks. And God knows, we have serious fire problems throughout our district. We've lost federal firefighter dollars and federal firefighters. We've lost research funding for Alzheimer's, cancer, spina bifida, smoke taint for agricultural products. Today, it was just announced that they're cutting 84% from HUD, the branch of HUD that comes in when there's a disaster and helps people rebuild their homes. And they just announced that they're firing 6,000 IRS workers right now. And what are we doing right now? We're doing our taxes right now. And it is difficult to be able to work in my office, to be able to work on behalf of my constituents with the IRS when they don't have staff there to help out and do the work that they need to be doing. We're also seeing either threats to cut or promises to cut staff at the VA and at the Social Security. Mike McGowan is a disabled veteran, you know what that means. And it's really interesting because some people say, "Well, we need to find, you know, the waste, the fraud, and the abuse." No kidding. I don't think there's anybody who would disagree with that. But I was going over the numbers. In this DOGE group, they claim that they've already found $55 billion in waste, fraud, and abuse. Well, if you go to their website, they list that they found $16 billion in waste, fraud, and abuse. And if you do a deep dive on that website, we found one error that was listed as an $8 billion fine. It was an $8 million fine. And now the president is promising to take 20% of all this money and send it back to the taxpayers in individual rebate checks. We'll do the math. So somewhere between their numbers, if you do the math on it, it works out to be somewhere between $24 per person and $164 per person if they send it all back. Well, if you take 20% of that, we're talking somewhere between $5 and $35 for a person. So just curious, how many people think that on their $24, $35, they can build fire breaks, hire firefighters, cure Alzheimer's, cancer, spina bifida, or do any of the other important work that these critical folks are doing on our behalf? And the question I get all the time is, "Well, what are you doing about it?" That's the only question that people should be asking. And I can tell you that I am and I will continue to do everything possible to put an end to this nonsense. And right now, there's three pillars of our effort to deal with this. One is work in the Congress. Two is work in the courts. And three is work in the Court of Public Opinion. Right now, I think there are 94 lawsuits that have been filed. I heard yesterday that there's going to be another series coming early next week. And I've been asked to sign on to some of those. And I suspect I'll sign on to every one of those. And we've had some success. Not 100%, and I don't think anyone here ever thought we'd have 100%, but we have had some success. And probably, to best illustrate that, you can look at the lawsuit that we had favorable opinions on, on birthright citizenship. The court rightfully said, "You can't use an executive order to overturn the Constitution of the United States of America." And another important one was, we've had success on congressional appropriations. You can't use an executive order to overturn money that the Congress of the United States appropriated and the President of the United States signed into law. So that's a good one. Now, it's important. It's important, but it doesn't solve all the problem. I met with a group yesterday who has a congressional appropriation, but they have to draw on that. So when they provide services, they have to file for reimbursement. And you know, they're worried to death that it's going to be drug-out and they're going to have a hassle. And their question is, "Will we still be in business to be able to do these services if they drag it out and make it tough for us?" In the Court of Public Opinion, I would say we've had pretty doggone good success rate. You know, they fired all of the nuclear safety engineers. And it was the Court of Public Opinion that raised hell, brought it to the attention of everybody else, and they've reinstated the nuclear safety engineers. We saw it with bird flu folks also. They fired the folks doing all the bird flu work. And then they figured out that instead of lowering the price of eggs on day number one, the price of eggs have gone up. And so the bird flu folks have come back. We saw it on national parks. You know, they fired 1,000 National Park employees. And they noticed all the part-time employees for national parks would not have a job. Well, there was total outcry from the Court of Public Opinion. They haven't rehired the 1,000, but they've brought back the 5,000 who will work on a seasonal basis and keep those parks open. So these town halls are really important. Rallies are really important. Your voice is important. This isn't something that Cecilia, or Christopher, or myself can do by ourselves or collectively. It's going to take all of us to raise our voices and tell our stories. Everybody has a story. The incredible research that's going on right here in Yolo County, at the University of California at Davis, to cure important things, the cancer trials that they've shut off. I got a call from a constituent today whose daughter is in a cancer trial. Done, shut off. The work that they're doing on brain research, Alzheimer's and dementia in danger. These are things that affect every one of us. There's not one person in this room who doesn't have a connection to some kind of terrible disease, either personally, with a family member, or with a friend. And these are dollars that are invested to deal with that. And they need to keep flowing. They're that important. So it's important to tell your story. I got a call from someone in our district who was a 20-year employee with the intel service. Put her life on the line for our national safety. She is working right now with USAID. And she got a call that said, "You're fired. Got 24 hours to pack your stuff and move out of this country." Well, there's nobody here that could pack your stuff in 24 hours. If you've been living in a house more than five minutes, you can't do that. So here she is in another country after putting her life on the line for us, and she's told she has to leave in 24 hours. Those types of things are critically important to hear about. The DEA. I'll get to that later. The DEA. The DEA attorney in Marin County, who sold his house and moved to South Carolina to run the DEA office there. He got there and was told, "Sorry, you don't have a job." And all the attorneys in that office, who were probationary, were fired. The USAID research that we're doing, every research grant at UC Davis for doing USAID work is tied right back to us. If we're teaching people in an impoverished country how to grow corn, the likelihood is, we're growing the seeds for them right here. We're probably making the farm equipment machinery for them right here. So it has an effect right here at home. It's important. And I guess to kind of cap it off, we heard that the Department of Transportation has new guidelines. You know, we passed in the last Congress, one of the bills that I worked on, the biggest investment in transportation since the Eisenhower administration. Incredibly important transportation investment. The new guidance from the new Department of Transportation is that all the funding will be determined based on new ratios, marriage ratios and childbirth ratios. California is the bankroller in this stuff. And to send our money to Washington, to send out to states that meet this phony criteria, puts us at a terrible disadvantage. And it's not something that we should put up with. And this whole idea about, "This is important because we've got to reduce the federal workforce," here's a takeaway for you. In 1952, 4.5% of the working population in the United States of America were federal workers. 4.5%. 2023, 1.3%. So this is nonsense, what we're hearing. We need to speak up, tell your stories. But I want to thank the different agencies that are here. If you have questions, please visit with them. We've got the Department of Veterans Affairs, California Employment and Development Department, High Cap, the NBA Agency on Aging, NAMI, Yolo County, Catholic Charities of Yolo and Solano, Yolo Children's Alliance, Empower Yolo, Yolo County Office of Education. Incredible, incredible folks providing for our district. Now, I would like to introduce the Majority Leader of the California State Assembly, my Assemblywoman, and my friend, and someone who's doing a great job for us, Cecilia Aguilar-Curry.
He was going to sing a song, but he can't. No, this really warms my heart to see so many people. Hello, hello, can you hear me now? I'll bring it up close, I think. Is this going to hurt anything? You okay? It warms my heart to see so many people here that were all concerned about democracy. And we need to continue the fight. And this is just one of the many times that we'll be able to get together and have this really important discussion. And I'm honored to be here today. And I want to thank Congressman Mike Thompson, Senator Christopher Cabaldin for being here and for putting this whole event together. It's so important because we only can sit on our sofas for so long and hear what we hear and see what we see, but this is where you're going to get the truth. I know a lot of you are here tonight because there's fear and there's uncertainty about what will happen to you, our friends, and our neighbors who are being targeted by the Trump administration. As your Assemblymember, the Assembly Majority Leader, and Chair of the Legislative Women's Caucus, I am committed to legislation that will help with the state budget, that strengthens our communities. Whether it's championing reproductive rights, a safe workplace, affordable housing, clean air and water, providing opportunity for our next generation, or supporting communities affected by unconstitutional federal actions or natural disasters, we will not stand down. Despite the chaos that's coming out of DC right now, California is focused on results and on protecting our people. That's why my legislative colleagues and I are delivering legislation to allocate resources to defend California from Trump administration's threat of mass deportations and unconstitutional actions. And California is ready because we've seen this movie one too many times. So during Trump 1.0, California sued the administration 123 times. And the majority of those lawsuits protected our environment, our immigrants, and access to healthcare. And we are already seeing that Trump 2.0 is starting at a much faster and scarier pace. But California is doing something about it. So since January 20th, California has joined lawsuits against the White House in response to a number of executive actions, including unlawful NIH funding cuts for universities and research institutions. Today, I talked to Dr. Drake, who's in charge of the UCs. And to see that man almost in tears when he's trying to figure out how to keep our universities, how to keep our research going, it broke my heart. We've got to fight for our universities. And it's so important that we make sure this research helps every single person in this room. We're also looking at executive actions challenging Elon Musk, unconstitutional exercise of power. And by the way, did anyone vote for this guy? And the constitutional right of a child born in our country to have citizenship. It is our great hope to collaborate with the federal government, but we will always be prepared if they don't. We have the responsibility to protect and defend fundamental rights of all Californians. For that reason, the legislature just passed two new laws in special session to protect California families, workers, and employers. SB X11 amends the California 2024 Budget Act to include state litigation fund. This will allocate $25 million to the Department of Justice to assist in protecting California residents and taxpayers. So if the federal government... So if the federal government withholds emergency aid after a natural disaster, like the fires in LA, the fund will allow us to pursue legal action to secure emergency aid from the federal government. This is funding to provide California taxpayers with billions of dollars, dollars that were sent to the federal government by California residents. So then we did SB X12, amends the Budget Act to add funding for legal services, including $25 million for legal assistance for Californians and immigrant communities. This funding goes towards supporting a free legal services for vulnerable Californians, including veterans, people with disabilities, unhoused youth, those facing eviction, seniors, and victims of domestic violence, wage theft, and human trafficking. So earlier this year, Assembly Democrats approved a $2.5 billion package to provide immediate aid for the LA wildfire recovery. We take care of all of our neighbors in need without political theater or conditions. The legislation, which passed with bipartisan support, was our first step to deliver billions in state funding for wildfire response, excuse me, recovery that will accelerate cleanup of impacted neighborhoods and fast-track the rebuilding of schools and homes. So for those of you that have been personally impacted by a fire, you know how important it is to rebuild so people can go back home, go to school, and go to work. But you may be wondering what you can do. What you can do to help in this moment with the threats of mass deportation from the Trump administration. Your engagement matters. So advocate and please volunteer. With the threats of mass deportations, people are afraid to leave their homes. You know, I had a young man, was playing basketball over the winters, and his family is not documented, and so they were scared to come to a basketball game. Isn't that sad? So other neighbors went by and picked up the family and took them so that their son could be watched by the parents at the basketball game. This is not America. This is not what we should be putting up with. So I'm asking you, volunteer for your local rapid-response network. They'll train you how to answer phones, to tell people what their rights are, and how to document and record ICE activities. Go on my website, or just Google me for my website, and download copies of Know Your Rights material and give it to anyone you think that might be fearful because of their status. And if you know of families who are afraid to leave their homes, reach out to them. Ask them if you can help them out. Grocery shopping, more. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do. So let's all commit. Let's all commit in doing an individual part to make sure no one in our community is left behind. Together, we can create the change we want to see. You know, as the great Dolores Huerta reminds us, "There's an opportunity to organize in every moment. Everyone can be an activist." And you have the opportunity to change the world with every minute of the day. I hope you listen to those words. "We need help." Every day I go to work and I can't, I love my job. Everyone knows how much I love my job. But my shoulders can only hold so much right now. It is a really difficult time. But we are there for you. We're going to fight with Congressman Thompson, fight with my friend Christopher Cabaldin. We can do it. But we need all of you behind us. So thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Cecilia. Now, it's my honor to introduce our state senator, Christopher Cabaldin. And for those of you who don't know, he's new to the Senate, but he's not new to public policy. Christopher was the longest-serving mayor of West Sacramento. And in that capacity, he did an incredible job. He focused on public safety. He focused on the environment, on housing. He really just lifted that community up and made it the great place it is today. And I'm glad you're my state senator. And I'm particularly glad because I've got a couple of people here I share that title with. But Lois Wolk was my state senator. Christopher is my state senator. And both of them represented the state senate district that I represented. And it's an important one, and we know you'll do a great job.
Let me also note, one other who should have been our state senator, and that's Hella Thompson, who serves as the state senator. Last time I was in this room with maybe 1/10th this number of people, it was for the Legal Women Voters. And we were doing a candidates forum. And I was asked about Prop 13 and commercial property taxes and about school scorecards. None of the issues that have come up since I was sworn into the Senate at the beginning of December, no one asked me about tyranny. No one asked me about protecting, about making sure that Elon Musk and the group of Trader Tots had access to all... But here we are. And when you're here on a day, it was this same day in 1942, the day after President Roosevelt issued the executive order calling for the roundup, the detainment in camps of Japanese-Americans in the West. And he did that despite all of the reports, all the evidence, even from J. Edgar Hoover at the FBI. But every entity in the federal government said, "There's no issue here. There's just racism." But there's no issue here. There's no evidence of collusion or disloyalty or anything. He did it anyway, after waiting for months while anti-Japanese-American fervor started to build. But at the beginning of that period, the overwhelming majority of Americans, the overwhelming majority of Americans stood by their Japanese-American neighbors. Said, "They are Americans, and we need to protect them." By the time the internment happened and a few weeks later, 80% of Americans believed that Japanese-Americans were a threat. A majority believed that Japanese-American citizens should be locked into camps. And it is a reminder that it isn't only the evil. It can sometimes be the best among us, and it can sometimes be ourselves that sanction the most despicable acts, the violation of our oath to the Constitution and the covenant that we live in in a democratic society. And it is a reminder of why so many of these actions are taking place today. They are lots and lots of bad policies. All of what we've talked about today and so many more. We haven't even gotten into Medicaid and Medi-Cal and the impacts there and so many others. But I think many of us are, I'm old enough to have been through elections that we didn't win, and we're ready for, you know, vigorous policy debates and fights to protect our priorities and our values. But there's something different about this one. and our values, but there's something different about this one. There's something more than Prop 13, commercial property rates. When you're, when, under the cover of all of this chaos and all these threats to communities, you go in and fire half the FBI agents in the office building, that you try to take command of those organs of the government that are there to enforce the lawful orders of the courts to make sure that the Constitution is followed, that you intimidate investigators and the courts and inspectors general, everyone in government that is responsible for assuring constitutional order, and that you then convey to all of us a sense that we are powerless, that someone else is to blame, that is hopeless, and that really, if we just, if we thought about it, isn't it true that democracy doesn't deliver good results anyway? This is the point. This isn't an afterthought, it's not one guy just going off for a minute with a live microphone. This is the purpose, and it is why I think so many of us are so both angry but also anxious about our democracy and the future. Now, we are grappling with this for sure in the state government, and you know, on our best days, we puff out our chests, and the most common line, I think, in the state capital is, "Did you know that California is the fifth-largest economy in the world?" Said by folks who are all too young to have contributed to making California the fifth largest in the world. But we say this with a great sense of pride in our, and in many senses, this is true. But today, we have to, we must live up to that, and also with the recognition that maybe because we say it so much, the federal government, the White House, they know it too. And so while they are doing exactly what we expected them to do in terms of going after immigrants undocumented and otherwise, against folks in the LGBTQ community, against clean energy and climate policies, in addition to doing all of that, they know that California and communities like ours are the most important buttress against their efforts to permanently transform the country and undermine our democracy. And so California itself is in the crosshairs. California itself, not just our people, but it is very clear that part of the point here is to sap the economic strength of California, the cultural strength, and the political strength of California. And so one of the things that we are doing, both the Assembly Majority Leader and myself and our colleagues in the legislature are finding back every day on issues that are under the hood, that as the tax bill would propose to sweep away large amounts of state tax revenue, for example, that we need to backfill things that are happening as a result of federal auctions. The threats to Medicaid and to Medi-Cal, one out of three Californians is served by Medi-Cal, and Medi-Cal's principal funding source is Medicaid. And there are 1,000 vulnerabilities in that program. And I won't say this in public, but there's lots and lots of other vulnerabilities that we have, where the federal government, I see Francis McChesney here, the federal water quality delegations that happen to California that could be revoked at any moment, and we may not, or may or may not be able to sue, but you could shut down all economic activity in California by grinding that process to a halt. And so I say this not to say, not to add to our anxiety more, but to help us understand that none of us are in this as Americans, just as allies for others. It may have felt that way the day after the election, "Okay, I'm gonna stand up for my immigrant neighbors. I will join with the LGBTQ community, stand up for transgender kids. I'll be there." And that is especially clear in Yolo County. We stand up for each other, even when we don't necessarily understand or agree on everything, we stand up for one another as neighbors. But what becomes so clear is that it isn't just, or even mainly, about the most vulnerable. It is about all of us. It is about our democracy, it's about everything, it's about agriculture, it's about the economy, it's about our basic rights, it's about whether we'll ever really come out of this again. And so, not to be dour, because there is also a path for us forward, and it is everything all at once. And hopefully, we will also earn a Golden Globe for our work in this, but it is everything all at once. But it is, we can see that what we're dealing with now is principally litigation, and it may feel like it's just a lot of lawsuits. It is a lot of lawsuits, and California is the main, our Attorney General and the funding that we have approved in the legislature for this work, we are the main source of the litigation in this country. And that is because virtually everything that the Trump administration is doing, virtually every single thing, is illegal. It violates some portion of the Constitution or law. We first have to stop as much of that as we can, because taking over, illegally firing and replacing FBI agents, it's there to make sure that they're doing it so that later, when we win a court case, there's nobody to enforce it, and so we must act immediately to stop those damaging things. Then there are all the policy things that we think we will be able to succeed in overturning, but then they'll go to the Congress and try to get the laws changed so we can't sue anymore about some of these, or change the federal appropriations, the federal budget, so we cannot sue anymore. And so while we're continuing at that point to do the legal strategy, we will have to persuade the Congress. And it's the great tragedy of our time, Mike Thompson does not have 218 votes in the House, and we have to change that, we have to change that in 2026, and we have to fight now, even in districts here in California where there are Republicans with large numbers of Medi-Cal, Medicaid recipients, as an example, who we've got to focus on. Get him a couple more votes once in a while to win as many of those fights as we can on the policy side, too. And then, as Congressman Thompson has said so clearly, we have to be in the court of public opinion, but not in the bleachers, or at least not in the bleachers all the time. Each of us needs to take, we've got to get off the court once in a while to rest, let the other members of our team in, but we have to be there in person, not just posting, not just at the coffee shop saying, "Isn't this awful? I wish somebody would do something about it," but showing up, showing up at nights like this, when there is, and when you see opportunities, when you see the moments where, okay, it looks like this rally, there's 1,000 of us calling for them every day, but this one today, it has this feeling like maybe it's like the Women's March in 2017, it will surprise everyone and create a moment in this country. None of us can know when that is. I will give you the sad story, there's no National Democratic Party person that is in charge of this and that could do it. It requires us as a people to do that, but we have to be ready to show up when it is needed to show up, in addition to continue to speak out and put political pressure, and then prepare to fight, to have elections, and then to win them again. So we are totally committed to being with all of you, but we need to be all together in backing our congressmen and those that are fighting for us in the court, in the Congress, and together in the court of public opinion. Looking forward to everyone's questions. Thank you.
Christopher, thank you very much. All right, I want to go to questions, I want to get as many as we possibly can, and the way it's gonna work, we've got a couple of folks walking around with microphones, and I want you guys just to pick out who you want to ask the question. We'll start with Lucy first. She'll hold the microphone, and then you ask the question, and one of us will try and answer it.
I'm very concerned that the Democratic Party is split. An awful lot of you guys in the Senate and the House of Representatives voted to confirm all of, except for one or two of them, except I think for Cash Patel, they all got some Democratic votes in the Congress, to confirm these dreadful people. And then I got a letter from the Democratic Senate Committee asking me for money. I would be, I'd jump off a cliff before I'd give you guys any money, Mike, I'm sorry to say this. And why are we also giving $10 million a day to Israel?
Well, I'll start with the confirmation votes. No member of the House of Representatives voted for any of those people. The Senate confirmation process is in the Senate, and it's, I know it's tough. Christopher told my wife the other day that he's getting calls from people telling him that they're disappointed that he voted to confirm these guys. When I was in the state senate, there was a confirmation hearing for Clarence Thomas, and someone called my office, and they said, "We want him to vote against Clarence Thomas." And whomever answered the phone said, "Well, that's the U.S. senate, Mike's in the state senate." And they said, "Don't give me that. If he didn't have anything to do with it, why are they referring to it as the Thompson hearings?" So, but that was the Senate. I don't think everybody else had Democratic votes. There were some Democratic votes for some of those, but most of them were party-aligned votes. Most concerning for me was the fact that there were some Republicans who folded really early, and I guess the Secretary of Defense is the one that is most glaring, where you had Joni Ernst, Republican Senator from Iowa, who was sexually abused when she was in the military, and she, from the beginning, she didn't like this guy, and some of the things that we all read that he had done, and yet, when it came time to vote for him, she did. And the story on Capitol Hill is that her Republican colleagues in the Senate, the people she serves with, told her, "Either you vote for him, or we're gonna primary you." Same thing happened with Bill Cassidy from Louisiana, a medical doctor, and a good guy. He served in the House, he and I worked together on a number of things, and he's a legitimate medical doctor, had great concerns over the nomination of the Secretary of Health and Human Services, and asked him in the hearings, I don't know if anyone watched those, but asked him flat-out some vaccination questions, and Robert F. Kennedy Jr. basically told him to stick it. And the next day, Cassidy came out and said, "Well, I talked to the Vice President, he assured me that I'd be able to have my issues heard, so I'm gonna vote for him." So I think it shows you the power of the Trump administration being able to pressure these people to vote in a way that they would not have ordinarily voted, and that's sad, and that's scary. As far as funding for, our international funding goes, Israel has always been part of that, and it goes through a process, and as you know, the last funding round, it was tied to help for the Palestinians and national security issues in other countries, Ukraine included. And that's something that is debated amongst the appropriators, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, but Israel is an ally of the United States. They have worked closely with the United States on national security issues that keep us safe here at home.
Thank you so much, and really thank you to all three of you for being here, and thank you to your fabulous staff for making this happen and for answering the phones so much. I'm speaking this evening as a member of Democracy Winters, which is a nonpartisan group, as well as Executive Vice President of the California IHSS Consumer Alliance, which represents the 800,000-plus Californians who depend on in-home supportive services to receive the care that allows them to live safely at home. To me, the most central, crucial issue is that Donald Trump and Elon Musk are engaging in a coup and are committing numerous illegal, harmful actions. And it sounds like I'm not the only one. And we really need our representatives to do everything that you can to really put the brakes on our country's lurch into authoritarianism. So my question is in that context. As demonstrated in last week's budget markup of the majority party in the House of Representatives and the administration planned to use Medicaid and other essential safety net programs as a piggy bank to fund tax cuts for the ultra-ultra-rich such as Donald Trump and Elon Musk. This would be devastating to people, it would be devastating certainly to the state and county budgets, I mean, it would throw so much into turmoil. And this question is for all three of you, because of your committee assignments and leadership positions, you're particularly well-placed to work on this issue, and so I'm excited about this opportunity. So the first question is for Congressman Thompson. Will you commit to voting against any bill that takes an axe to Medicaid and commit to refusing to negotiate on or vote for any funding bills or debt ceiling relief during the administration's ongoing and unconstitutional power grab? And for Senator Cabaldin and Assembly Majority Leader Aguirre Curry, will you commit to urging our congressional representative and other federal partners within your districts to refuse to negotiate on those spending bills as well as pursue the other state-level remedies that you are working on? Thank you.
You want me to answer so you know what you have to do to lobby me? Well, I think everybody here who knows me knows that I'm gonna be pretty voracious against any of these ridiculous cuts. I want to thank you for bringing up the point that a lot of what they're doing is trying to create headroom to be able to pass their big tax bill. And I just want to, I want to put a little meat on those bones, because so much of this is, I hear from people say, "Well, shouldn't we be cutting this? Isn't our national debt too high?" And the answer is, yes, our national debt's too high. That's why I carried the legislation to require Pago in the Congress, and what that rule did was required any bill that is passed by the Congress had to be paid for. You could either do that by cutting something else or increasing taxes, but it had to be paid for. And I did that when the Democrats were in the majority. The following Congress, when we were in the minority, the first rule they did when they took over is they passed a rule that amended my Pago, so it doesn't include paying for tax cuts. Now, there's nobody in this room who has any experience managing a home budget or took an econ class who doesn't know that tax cuts cost money. And everybody from the Republican budget analysts in Washington will tell you, "Tax cuts do not pay for themselves, period. They just don't." So anytime you cut taxes, you're spending money. So in the 2017 Trump tax cuts, they did just what you said, they gave a huge tax cuts to corporations and the absolute richest people in the country. It cost us $1.5 trillion, went to our national debt. So right now, in that, part of that budget work is greasing the skids for their new tax bill, and what they want to do is two things. They want to extend the 2017 tax cuts. Remember I said they cost $1.5 trillion to our national debt? Given the time that's passed, that, just extending what they did then is $4.5 trillion to our national debt. And then they want to add in all of the other things that the current president promised in regard to tax cuts when he was on the campaign trail. That's about $15 trillion, so do the math. And the idea that you would cut Social Security, and make no mistake about it, they want to privatize Social Security, and they've got bills that would do that. Make no mistake about it, they want to cut Medicare. Make no mistake about it, they want to cut Medicaid. And Medicaid's the easy one, you ask any one of them, and they'll tell you that they want to do that. And the idea that they would do that and hurt the American people in the way that that would hurt the American people, to give a tax cut to the richest people in this country, I think is obscene, and I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that we stop that from happening. In regard to voting on bills, I believe that our leadership, Democratic leadership in the House will work seriously and, I think, effectively to ensure that we don't lend any Democratic vote to any bill that doesn't help Democrats. So there's, there might be some trade-offs to keep the government going. I'm not for shutting down the government. That's a big hit to everybody, but make no mistake about it, that's what the Trump administration is doing by defunding everything, they're shutting down the government, and that is a huge hit to us. So as our leadership negotiates where we go from here, I think you can be assured that they'll do a real good job.
We've had an interesting year at the state assembly, as well as the Senate, I'm sure, but we have had to take a really fine-tooth comb over the budget. But what I will tell you is that we are doing more things that are transparent... is that we are doing more things that are transparent, that are being accountable for what we're doing. And we're making sure the bills that we have, we're implementing it. Because I can tell you, there's hundreds of bills that we have done over in that building that we have never implemented. And we make a big to-do about it. And we're supposed to be helping working families and make things affordable. But the fact of the matter is, there are plenty of bills that have never been implemented. So we are taking a fine-tooth comb on every agency right now and asking them to come back to us. And we're asking them to show us and doing more oversight for each one of them. If we don't, because we know what we have ahead of us. And if we don't try to figure out right now, is there waste? Absolutely. Can we do things better? Absolutely. And I'm really confident that we're going to be able to do that. And we have great leadership over there right now. I have a young man who's my speaker, who has committed to making sure that we get our budget taken care of. We have meetings, I don't know how many meetings we have a week just regarding budget. And we're trying really hard to make sure we don't leave anyone behind, Kate. And you know that we will not do that intentionally. But you know, sometimes unintentional consequences come by some of the policy we do. And shame on us.
At our town hall yesterday, toward the end, a young person stood up with a question. And she said, "I'm LGBT, and I'm living in terror." And she was in tears, or they were in tears, excuse me. And I made some remarks about, "You're not alone. We are all here for you, and I'm here for you, and we're going to fight." And I went up to talk to them after the session was over. And they said, "Thank you for those words. I'm just as much in terror that I won't be able to afford housing." And I think it's a reminder that, and it harkens back to something I said at the opening, which is that part of what the strategy here is for Donald Trump is to undermine our confidence that democracy itself can work, that government can work, that it can deliver. And actually, all the polling shows that as well. That I'm of a certain age and a generation where the protection of institutions is itself a value. That isn't shared by many other voters, especially those voters who we didn't do so well with in November. Instead, their concerns are, what is going to make my life affordable? Will I have a place to live? Can I eat anything, much less eggs? And so it is absolutely critical that we answer loudly that, yes, democracy and American and national state-level government can deliver, that it works, that it isn't just a fight all the time, that it also means something in our daily lives. And so it can be very tempting. I know sometimes I want to go down to my own City Hall and yell at the city council members, and they're here tonight, and say, "Why aren't you out there fighting? What are you doing here tonight, talking about sewer rates or building another apartment complex?" I mean, the world is in flames, and there's a coup underway. Why aren't you doing something? And before I get in the car and go, or close it up, before I walk over there to City Hall, I remember that this is as much of the battleground in the court of public opinion is about whether or not our democracy and our government can function. And so we must, we can chew gum and walk at the same time, which is to fight and also to govern. And so we are, as the Majority Leader said in the state capitol, we're very focused on the fight and also, how will we grapple with cuts and with all these other threats? Let me say one other thing about it, because I know we've got so many questions tonight. But the other thing that we all have to be ready for is the moral dilemmas that are here already but are going to be coming in force. I see Garth, the Yolo County Superintendent of Schools, is here. He received a letter on Friday, I think it was, from the U.S. Department of Education, a dear colleague letter, which sounds very nice, on Valentine's Day, which sounds even nicer. And that letter said, basically, "If you ever want to see your children or your federal funding again, you better erase any reference to DEI," or the DEA, probably, "and you will do nothing that is to serve the most vulnerable students in your system, or else we will take all of your money away." And so we will be faced with these moments where they'll say, "Oh, you know what? We're about to cut Medi-Cal, but..." Okay, you can keep Medi-Cal, but you've just got to agree that no immigrant could ever use it. And we're like, "Oh, my gosh, what are we going to do?" Like, what is... And this is exactly the situation of that internment from 1942, is undermining our ability to even really make sense of what's right and what's wrong anymore. And that's what's here now. And more and more of that will be coming. And so it will be incumbent on us both to remember our moral core and our moral foundation and to do it together. Because it's so easy to be a Yelp reviewer on everyone else's moral choices when we are going to have to be grappling with this in serious ways, where every choice is one that you cannot sleep as a result of. So we have to keep the moral center in mind because there's a direct assault on our capacity to be our better angels.
I'll just say, we've already seen that in regard to federal funding for fire response in Altadena and Pasadena. The idea that a president, any president of the United States of America would say, "Thousands of homes burned, hundreds of people died, a bunch of businesses burned down. You're down and out, and you need our help? I'm not giving it to you unless you do whatever he wants." It's despicable that any human being would turn their back on our neighbors when they're in need.
Rep. Thompson, can we give a testimonial as USDA federal employees?
We have somebody with a microphone right here. We'll get around to it.
USDA federal employees and what's going on?
Yeah, please tell us.
And the local community, can we give some testimonial?
We'll get somebody over there with a microphone.
From the local community. My name is Deanne Griffith. I'm an assistant professor at the University of California, Davis. I work in the Department of... I work in the Department of Physiology and Membrane Biology. I'm a neuroscientist by training. And I just want to tell a quick story about my lab. My lab currently employs three graduate students, a project scientist, and I pay three undergraduate students to work in my lab as well and also co-sponsor a lab manager. That money that I use to pay them comes from federal NIH grants largely, not exclusively. But the vast majority of that money comes from NIH grants. One of those grants is a diversity grant. Because as you all might notice, I'm a black woman. And so I was eligible to apply for one of these diversity grants despite the fact that I'm also an excellent neuroscientist. That grant is in jeopardy. That grant pays over half of my salary. That grant completely funds one of my graduate students. That grant might be canceled because of the slash of DEA... Oh, my lord, y'all got me saying it too? DEI funds, right, towards federal grants. I have two years left in that grant, and I might lose $400,000 in direct support of my research. This grant is to study chronic pain. Exactly. And in addition to that $400,000, the university is going to lose around $235,000 in what are called indirect costs. I just want to briefly explain what indirect costs are for those who are less clear. For every NIH grant that the University of California receives, that directly supports research, they also receive indirect costs that go to keep the lights on. These pay plumbers to fix leaks in our sinks. These pay electricians to fix shortages in our circuits. These pay grants analysts in order to make sure that we're spending our money appropriately. They pay safety officers in order to ensure that we're disposing of our chemicals correctly and following all of these good procedures that keep the town safe, right? The University of California, Davis School of Medicine receives about $50 million annually in indirect costs that supports jobs that do all of those things. And that is going to be slashed by about 85% if this cut on indirect costs goes through. So I just wanted to highlight that for the community. I do have one quick question after one quick announcement. I am also leading a rally, because I heard a call to action. We are acting. There is going to be a rally at the state capitol called Stand Up for Science. It's going to be on March 7th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. If you care about science and curing disease and supporting jobs that support science, whether they be at the bench, behind the bench, under the bench for the plumbers fixing things, I encourage you to show up. And I guess my question is to all three of you, would you be willing to attend? And would you be willing to speak and stand up for science?
Thank you very much for your testimony. As the chairman of the Neuroscience Caucus in the United States Congress, I'm a big fan. And I think it's important to point out that the work that you and your colleagues do in this space touches everybody in this room and everybody that everybody in this room knows. There is not an issue... It's my belief that climate change and mental health are the two biggest issues that face us as a people. And in regard to the mental health side, there's not enough dollars in the world to be able to address mental health the way we're doing it right now. Right now, it's a Band-Aid. We're putting Band-Aids on symptoms. We need to do the brain research that's going to get us to a point where we can figure this out before we have to start spending money on all these symptoms. And the work that you and your colleagues are doing are getting us there. And I want to thank you for that. And I want you to know that I don't know where I am, that I don't know what coast I'm on that day, or where I am. But if I can be there, I will. Anything that you do to rally folks in this regard, if I'm around, I'll be there. So thank you, your team, my staff, for letting us know. And the other thing I want to say is, it's testimonials like this. It's stories like this that have to be told. So if you have a story, get on your iPhone and tell it, post it on your Facebook. Send it to your friends. Send it to me. Because I'm always looking for these stories. Because, you know, the old picture's worth a thousand-word stuff. Because everything that I'm hearing from everybody in our district touches everybody else in our district. And that's part of mobilizing the troops to make sure that we can let everybody know how dangerous this guy is.
USDA, want to hear?
USDA.
Well, did the other...
They'll be there if they can.
Okay. Well, thank you.
John Newman, we love you.
Thank you.
Love you, John.
So I'm a 20-year civil servant, part of the USDA Research Scientist adjunct appointed in the UC Davis campus. So I'm very happy to have you here and speaking to these issues. I'll hit it at two levels. One, well, three levels. One, I've checked the Hatch Act, and I can be here and I can talk, so here I am. The research dollars issue, the tying our hands with research dollars within the agency, one of the big problems is they've put a freeze on all incoming and outgoing agreements. So as with Professor over here, I also am supporting post-docs, graduate students, project scientists with soft funds, not congressionally mandated hard money for the USDA mission, but because the funding for the USDA mission is actually insufficient to complete our mission, we have to compete for additional funding. So those research dollars that are coming from our stakeholders, the Pulse growers, the Peanut Board, California Walnut Commission, numerous others, are being held up. A lot of these are California-centric, a lot of them are national and international stuff. Colleagues of mine have large funding from the Gates Foundation, millions and millions of dollars supporting federal research missions that are frozen. So I'm hoping that Congress is trying to get a hard decision on this, that there should be a separation between stakeholder funding and federal dollars, committed federal dollars. So that's one issue I wanted to make sure that is raised because it's a serious issue. And the wife reminds me, it has big impacts on Yolo County, which I'm sure you're all aware of. The other serious, serious problem is the way that these terminations have happened on probationary employees. So I've gone through the federal employee's handbook. And what they've done is blatantly illegal. They will get reversed on appeal, I hope, if the judges read the law. But the very, very limited piece of it is anybody who's let go for ostensibly poor performance is supposed to have a 30-day notice. Nobody got a 30-day notice, one. Two, the people that they let go were not poor-performing individuals. None of their supervisors support this. None of their supervisors, thankfully, were forced to sign these separation documents. Nonetheless, there's a lot of very talented people that have been thrown to the curb. So I was hoping I can get a commitment from you, Mr. Thompson, to work on behalf of these maligned employees because they're the best of us that have sacrificed themselves to come to civil service. And to Ms. Aguilar and Cabaldon, Mr. Cabaldon, will the state please fight to make sure these people can get their unemployment insurance? Because they were technically fired, which makes them not eligible. I would really like to see a law, something passed,
Thank you both. I know we have both of the science and federal worker issues up in front of us. So let me say first, the state of California filed suit immediately on the research funding piece as well. Two months ago, people, Republicans in the legislature were saying, "How dare you vote to give the Attorney General money when we have real problems?" And thank God that we did and that the governor signed that package because it allows us, every day that something comes up, the Department of Justice is there half an hour later filing a lawsuit. And one good news is with all of these, that one judge in Florida that always rules for Trump in every possible stolen documents case, she can only handle so much cases too. So at some point, many of these cases will get to judges that are not thoroughly incompetent involved. So we filed suit immediately. Second, on the unemployment insurance, I've heard the issue. I now chair the Budget Subcommittee that oversees that budget in the state, so let's talk afterwards as well. Because I know it's been a topic of conversation by trying to figure out how to grapple with that question in a fund that's already oversubscribed. But this is exactly an issue where we already know that terminations are illegal because we're suing over them. So it should be a solvable case. And the last thing I would say, because I agree, if I'm anywhere within 100 miles, I'll be at the rally, is it's a good lesson for all of us is that the court of public opinion, mass action, sort of, if the Democratic Party were to organize and a million people came to Washington, D.C., a million people is a lot of people, and it would be completely ignored. Why? Because, well, of course, Democrats are coming. We lost the election, this is politics. Whereas if it's scientists that are organizing, or I said the other day, if duck hunters decided to have, you know, a nationwide strike or what have you, that's where the breakthrough moments come. And so, you know, I would just urge you, if your number-one issue is climate activism and you're just waiting for the rally on climate activism, keep your eye out for that. But also, if you wait, a day before, the morning of, the science rally or the duck hunter rally, you're hearing that there's going to be two million of them descending down to Capitol, show up. In the Capitol or here locally, right? You know, we've got to look for the moments where, as the public, we can speak up. And our most effective message usually will be from the most unexpected constituencies in America. That's what gets the attention. That's what says, no, it's not just Democrats versus Republicans, it's America that is waking up.
For my part of the question, yes.[1791.91] For my part of the question, yes, I'm all in. I will help any way that I can. And I would further stress what the Senator said. And that is the more faces you can put with this, the better off. And in every instance, every scientist at UC Davis that's doing research, it ties back to someplace. There's somebody, not just in blue districts, but in red districts that are benefited from this. And make sure you run that back to those red districts and folks there hear about it. Because that's what's going to make the difference. As Christopher said, you know, it takes 218 votes to pass a bill in the House. I don't have that. But the fact is, if two or three Republicans stood up and voted with us, we've got 218. So if you're putting pressure on them in their district, explaining why cuts of this nature are foolish and it's hurting their district, we just may get some of them to come over.
Okay, good evening. Thank you so much for doing this. I voted for all three of you, as I'm sure most of the people in this room did. So it's very nice to see you in person and to meet you. Just by background, I am a retired military officer, 26 years. And I've been in federal service now as a civilian for about 24 years total. And so my, I guess, my question to you, if I could get to it, is that civil servants have been maligned and disparaged for decades. This didn't just stop. This didn't just start. This has been going on for decades. And what's frustrating to me is that it appears that no one in Congress advocates for us. We're just, you know, whenever there's a budget fight or whatever, it's, it all comes down to the federal workforce and how we're wasting money. We've been accused of, those of us who telework, we've been accused of watching Netflix, playing golf, playing tennis. And I'm like, do they realize that this is 2025 and we're in the electronic age and it is impossible for you to get away with that with all the monitoring and all of that that goes on? That's just about impossible to do for someone to be absent from work all day long and no one know about it? And so I guess that's my question to you. When you talk about, I'm specifically referring to your pillars and your third pillar. You talk about working public opinion. How are you going to do that? Because quite frankly, and I don't mean to be offensive, but the Democratic Party, or I should say the left sucks at communication. The right commandeers the public discourse. They persuade the public even when they're in the minority. They are able to do that. They are able to control the discourse. I mean, I heard Speaker Jeffries say the other day, you know, Stotz, sorry, not Speaker, Minority Leader Jeffries say the other day that...
Not Speaker, yeah.
Not Speaker, yeah. Minority Leader Jeffries say the other day that, well, the Democrats just don't have any leverage. That was a terrible message. So what are you doing about your messaging? I would like to hear that specifically. You know, it's great to say we're going to work, we're going to work public opinion, but I'd like to know specifically, what does that mean?
Thank you. It's an excellent question. It's an excellent question. Thank you for your service, both military and federal government service. I think the, I think Democrats' message has been criticized longer than public employees have been criticized. I don't think this is a new thing either. And I just, I want to kind of put it in context because if you hear what their message is, it'd be really easy to get the spotlight if Democrats parroted similar messages. They're the ones who are criticizing public employees. I've spent my time recognizing the value of public employees. And I would suspect that my colleagues here have the same experience. We work on behalf of constituents. Most of the work we do is responding to constituent concerns. We work with the bureaucrats who staff all of these programs and agencies. We know how much they work. We know how understaffed they are. So if we did the, you know, if we took the easy route and criticized public employees or whomever else these guys are criticizing, more often than not, or if not always, incorrectly and dishonestly, it'd be really easy for us to get the headlines and the spotlights. So I think we can still go out into the court of public opinion. We can still make our case. We heard some great testimony tonight that can add to that. And we can do it without disparaging the good people that work so hard for the American people. So from my perspective, I'm doing everything I can here. We're having town hall meetings, one last night in Napa, one tonight here, one tomorrow night in Santa Rosa, a big rally in Napa on Monday. I go into other districts a lot. I will continue to do that. Leading up to the election, I was in California, Georgia, Maryland, and Michigan. So I'm not, I'm not adverse to taking the show on the road to champion these issues. And we'll continue to do that. But I want to get back to one thing. I think Christopher nailed it when he said it. If you're looking for one of the three of us to turn this thing around, it's going to take forever. It's going to take all of us to do this. So it can't be just me out in the public, Court of Public Opinion, or Cecilia or Christopher. It's got to be everybody. You've got to share your message, share your story, write your letters to the editor, call your friends, your relatives, and your acquaintances who live in red congressional districts. You don't have to convince me. I'm here. I'm with the professors. I'm with the healthcare folks. I'm with the Department of Education. I am 100% in and believe in public service. I believe in the institution of representative government and how we can use it to help people get ahead and have opportunities. We need to get out into those red districts and make sure their constituents understand how important that is and that they hear from their constituents.
Hi, I'm a teacher for Woodland Joint Unified School District. I just wanted to piggyback on what the professor over here said and what your response was about showing up at all the protests and rallies because I've been to the last two on the Capitol and there wasn't anyone, like, no speakers, nobody there. And it would have made a huge difference if we had somebody. And I know that you may not be there and I understand that if you could get good speakers like Martin Luther King during the Vietnam War, we had so many people on these rallies. And that's what we need. We need you guys speaking to us so that we can have hope that somehow there's going to be, you know, enough of us out there to make a difference.
Thank you for the comment. As I told you the other night, at that rally, I had my own rally and with 500 people over in Napa. If there are rallies, you should let us know. And if we're around, we're going to be there. I mean, we're into this.
So thank you for, thank you for bringing this up about the Capitol. So there are rallies that are done over there and we are not always aware of them in a timely manner. So that's really frustrating because I can guarantee you, there's quite a few of us that live in the area that would show up at the Capitol. I really want to encourage you that if you know of a rally, if you could send the flyer or the information to our offices, we can make sure we're there, our team's there, and even put it out on our Facebook and our Instagram. So please let us know. Blue sky?
I'm on blue sky. Congressman Thompson did as well.
Oh, blue sky. Am I missing something?
You are, you are, you are. We'll get you on there tonight.
I got WhatsApp.
So I was at the Napa rally as well and so we agree with everything that's been said. I also, yeah, so I, what I, I think it's important, for us, it's our job and it's our calling and our passion, but I also, I think it's easy for us to feel like we all should be at a rally every day. And if there is a rally anywhere, we must be there. And we will. But we all are going to be needed for a while. This is a sprint, every moment to make sure that we get the marathon. But if we win, all we get is a marathon. We're not going to win the entire thing in a week or in a month or in six. We will just win the chance to be able to compete in that marathon. It's coming up. I know that sounds horrible, but we have to take care of ourselves and each other along the way. And it's why, so if you cannot, if you can only go to seven rallies a week, then just go to seven rallies and we don't feel, don't feel like you let down America by not going to the eighth one. And it's funny and it's also true because we are going to, I have lost, I've lost three elections, one of them the lowest. But sometimes I've lost elections where the stakes were high. We happen to agree on everything, so it wasn't that big of a deal. And it lasts for, it turns out it lasts for a while. There's no fixing it. That is one of the features and the maddening things about a democracy. And we didn't win in November, or at least that's what the official results all show, that we didn't win in November, which means that we are now, our back is up against the wall and we have to fight. And we're going to have to be doing that up until and beyond the next election. And so I, more than anyone, I want to get back to working just on housing and waterfront development and, you know, getting funding for schools. I want that too. And I'm working on that also for my own mental health and for yours. But this is going to be a fight for all of us and it's going to be for an extended period. So show up, show up and stand up and also take care of yourself, please.
Hi, my name's Jen Boche Danzer and I'm the Executive Director for the National Alliance on Mental Illness here in Yolo County. I have, thank you. I so appreciated hearing the testimony this evening and I wanted to share some testimony as well. Congressman Thompson, I want to thank you. You have been a huge supporter of mental health. I have been in your office in Washington DC asking you to support legislation that you have supported that is now being overturned. The story I wanted to tell is that this week, we were scheduled to have a family-to-family class in Spanish. Our family-to-family class is designed for family members and loved ones of those who are living with mental illness. In early January, the class was almost at capacity. We had 12 people enrolled in the class. This is the first time we have offered this class in Spanish in over three years at least. The class was to begin Monday of this week. We had to cancel the class on Friday because of the 12 people who were enrolled, 11 withdrew because they were afraid. They were afraid to attend. They were afraid of the ICE rays. These are families who are struggling with a loved one who is living with a mental illness that were unable to get the help and support they needed because of the fear that has been instilled in them from this administration. And I think it's just critically important that we continue to share these on-the-ground stories of the impacts that are happening locally. That might have only been 12 families, but that was 12 families who needed help.
Debbie Lyles, and I guess I'm a little concerned. I watch a lot of Democracy Now! at FreeSpeech.org. And they had a professor from Princeton on talking about this who studies Viktor Orban and how he destroyed the democracy in Hungary. And she said this is identical, but they're doing it faster with Trump and Musk and Musk helping him. I don't hear a word coup. I heard the coup, the Saturday night coup was one thing. I heard about it on Monday morning. Mainstream media didn't even talk about it till later that week. It's very, I don't know what we need to do, but the bottom line is they are taking down the pillars of our government. And once that happens and all these lawsuits, the courts can't keep up. And so then they fill all these positions with their people and they, the judge, well, they ask them, okay, do you want us to fire all these people when it gets to the courts? And they'll say, oh, no, no, let's make sure they're protected so it will never happen again. So then they take control of the court system. And that's going to happen very quickly. And I don't want to, I don't know what we need to do, but we need to really move. I talk to people, they are not clueless on most of this stuff. The other thing is so important, most people I know, I mean, I was very ignorant most of my life, even though I was caught in my Senate when I was like in my teens. The bottom line, I never knew how the government worked. And most people don't. They don't, they think a president has a magic wand and it's all the time. And if you could start educating people and letting them know where they can get media and fact-checking at least their own media that they listen to. And I just don't hear that happening and it's so important. Thank you and I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you very much. And I don't want anybody to discount your concerns and your fears. That's why we're here. That's why we're doing town halls. That's why we're doing rallies. That's why we're suing. That's why we're doing every legislative procedure we can because we can't let that happen. And again, it can't be these three of us. It's got to be everybody. And on the issue of, a lot of people don't know how government works. After Christopher told my wife that people think that he had a vote on the nominations, she was explaining to him at her work how people always tell her, hey, things are really heating up as Mike going back to Sacramento to work on this. She thinks we should have classes. So that may be, that may be in the future too, between the rallies and the town halls. We have room for one more question. And okay, here's the deal. If we don't get to your questions, if you write them out, we'll respond.
My question is really quite simple. What recourse do we have if the Trump administration simply defies the court's jurisdiction? What recourse do we have?
I don't want to minimize that concern and nor do I want to frighten everybody into thinking that it's all going down the drain. That's why we're...
It is going down the drain.
That's why we're doing everything that we're doing. We have, I believe, we have the judicial strength to preclude a lot of what he's doing. And we have to continue to work in that regard. We are a country of laws. We need to make sure that the judicial... Hold on. I'm getting to it. I'm getting to it. I'm getting to it. I don't think we want to get there and figure out what recourse. We have to prevent it from happening. And I think it's important to note that the US Supreme Court is not deaf to public opinion. We know that. We know that. We've seen it in the past. That's why speaking out, that's why the rallies, that's why the Court of Public Opinion is as important as it is.
Why isn't Elon Musk arrested? Why can't California, why can't California put out a warrant for his arrest for stealing my data? That's where I ride. Why is he stealing my data and no one's doing anything about it? You should not come to California without fear of being arrested.
There, as I said, there are 94 lawsuits more to follow to prevent this...
Arrested!
Wait a second, wait a second. Along with the young lady's remarks about some people don't know how government works, some people don't know how law enforcement works, I have no arrest powers. Someone has to break the law and then there has to be charges filed. There's a process that, I can't arrest people.
I know that, but I'm trying to say that right now, that he is violating, I'm sure he's violating California laws. I am absolutely sure. Why is there not a...
That's why we're going through the court process. One more question right here.
One is, I was at the rally in Napa and Senator Galvez, you said we shouldn't turn on each other in this. And the thing is, the strength in democracy is our ability to also have a debate. And we've got to learn how to do that because I think it makes all of us stronger. That thing in Napa was far from a rally. I had some of my friends called it a pet's, flag petting ceremony because it was more... I had some of my friends call it a flag petting ceremony, because it was more about honoring the flag, the symbol, rather than what the symbol represents. And I want to thank our two state representatives, because they had the courage to get up and call it out, and that meant a lot to all of us that were there, and telling us what you're doing and telling us what we need to do. My question is this, for you, that you mentioned that there are three pillars, right? The first one is Congress, the second one was courts, and the third one was public opinion. I know what we're doing around public opinion, I know what we're doing around the courts, and thank you for all the information that's come out tonight. Public opinion, for me, to go to the rallies, is not just to wake up the Republicans, it's also to wake up my representatives and the Democrats. And I feel like they're not waking up- Just let me ask this question. So what I want to do is understand your job. You are my congressional representative. And for me, when I look at it, it looks a little bit, and I don't mean to be disrespectful because I don't have the knowledge, it looks a little bit like, ah, business as usual. And then I hear from Jeffries and some others, I read things that you're upset with Move On and Indivisible, and it's like, come on, we all have to be in this together, and we all have to have some energy. So what is, what are you doing differently now in your role in Congress? How are you interacting? And where do you put your emphasis than you did maybe years ago or last year? So how has this changed what you're doing and your job? Because you said you're working in Congress.
It's changed it a lot. I'm spending the majority of my time focusing on these issues that I feel are a front to our democracy and to our freedoms. And I can tell you that our Democratic Caucus is doing the same thing. And we're working with the legal scholars, working with lawyers, we're helping to promote these lawsuits that are being filed. And as I mentioned earlier today, as critical pieces of legislation come to the floor that would give us leverage, we will be acting accordingly on those. Well, you know, I don't think that, we've had this, we had this discussion in our caucus. Somebody said, we should stop everything, we should move to adjourn. But wait a second, wait a second. That's happened before, and it's delivered absolutely zero. It just, it all does is waste people's time. It takes us away from being able to focus on these issues. If we're running back and forth the vote on parliamentary measures every five minutes, we can't meet with constituents, we can't meet with lawyers, we can't caucus to figure out what we can do to leverage these guys into doing something. Someone asked me right early on this, they said, why are you in the district? You ought to be back there and debating this stuff. Well, here's the deal. The Republicans are running the House of Representatives, they're the majority. So they set the agenda, they set the schedule. If I went back today to rally on the House floor about all the things that we're here today because we're concerned about them, it would be a dark room, because the lights are out. It would be, I might be able to get in, the doors would probably be locked. There would be no microphones, because they're shut off, there's no staff there to run it. So it would be an exercise in beating my head against the wall. So you've got to work within the process in order to do this. And I know that Trump is not, and that's why the courts have opinioned against him on a number of occasions, and I think that we're going to see that happen more and more. I know you don't like it, but the fact of the matter is, we're doing everything that we can. Now, the important thing to do is go to red districts, get them worked up, because we need three of their votes in order to do any of this stuff legislatively. Well, I explained already what happened in the confirmation process. I gave you examples of- Let me finish, please. I gave you two examples of two US senators who buckled, they caved, because their own colleagues told them that they were going to come after them. Now, in regard to working with House members on this, I don't know that we have anybody who's willing to come out against this guy, but I do know there are a number of House seats that are reachable. Now, I saw poll numbers today, three of the new Republicans who had, who had beat Democrats are underwater. One of them by 56%, one of them by 47%. That sends a real, real loud message. Trump's underwater right now in the polling. So what we're doing collectively, what we're doing is having some effect in that regard. I mean, I'll tell you without any hesitation, if I go back to Washington on Monday and I go into the Republican cloakroom and say, hey, come on, you guys, let's vote against this guy, he's crazy. How many votes you think I get? It's not going to happen. They are, their people are focused. And remember, redistricting is a big problem in this whole battle. There are districts that, represented by Republicans who are so far to the right, if they're to take another step, they'd fall off the edge. And if they work with a Democrat, they're getting a primary, and they're losing. We've seen this time and time again. You saw two prime examples with the two last speakers that we had, or the three. McCarthy, he didn't even get a chance to work with them, and they booted him out. And then you had before that Paul Ryan, who worked with Nancy Pelosi to pass a budget to deal with what the American people needed, keep the government open. They threw him out. And before that, you had John Boehner, who worked with Nancy Pelosi. They gave him such a benefit, he has left. He said, I'm here to get things done for my district and for the American people. And doing that means we work together, my people are crazy, I'm gone.
What about reminding those Trump politicians? I mean, what, Trump's going to throw them all away. Why don't you remind them?
He's going to try. That's why they need to hear from the American people. You need to be loud and clear, turn your focus to them.
But you're our mouth.
Thank you all very, very much. And I want to remind you, we have all of these great agencies here, and if you are interested in any of the services they provide, please visit them.